Schedule six thirty meeting, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. We're going to begin our meeting with the invocation from Pastor Leonard Hines from the Henry County Fire Department, and then we will go directly into our pledge of allegiance.
Want to thank you for this privilege tonight. Let's pray together as we begin this evening. Our Father in heaven, Lord, we thank thee for this day. Lord, as we embark upon this new year that you've given us, Lord, may we be mindful of the business that needs to go forward. And sometimes in the voices of times, there are so many of them. Lord, I pray tonight you'd help us to overcome the voice of fear itself, knowing that fear is not of thee and that we rest in thee as we move toward progress. And Lord, perhaps another voice, the voice of failure, the fear of not succeeding. Lord, we know that in progress, there is that possibility, but may we rest in thee. And Lord, tonight for the fatigue, the voice of fatigue within each and every, Lord, resident, employee, administration, and in our beloved county, we pray you'd help us to overcome that and that we would fight the good fight and move forward for the cause. So Father, tonight I ask your blessings upon the administration, the leadership. We thank you for them. Lord, what a big weight upon their shoulders. So tonight I pray you'd lift that burden, give them wisdom and leadership and, Lord, in the things that need to be addressed and discussed. Father, I ask you also to bless those within our county, within our beloved community. Lord, the firefighters in the stations running the calls, the police officers that make our environment safe, where we have a place to live and to raise our families and to enjoy the life you've given us. So Lord, meet with us in this meeting and all the things that need to be discussed. May we have your hand of blessing upon us, and we'll thank you and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen. Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. I do have a couple of announcements. The following planning and zoning item that was advertised for this meeting has been postponed at the request of the District Commissioner. RZ twenty-one dash sixteen, Halpern Enterprises, Inc. of Atlanta, requesting a rezoning from C two to mixed youth. This case will not be heard tonight and will be rescheduled for a later date. The public hearing will be re-advertised in the Henry Herald, and the new meeting date will be posted at the property site. So those that are here for that particular meeting may be dismissed because that public hearing will not be taking place tonight. We're going to amend the agenda to add the resolution approving the twenty-twenty-two qualifying fees for the upcoming election. This will be added as the last item on the consent agenda. And each of the board members should have a copy of that. It's left here on the, on your diaries. The other item for discussion, I know commissioners during the last meeting of the year, staff brought forth a resolution authorizing a ten point five percent pay increase for all employees. During the meeting, there were several comments made regarding the affordability of the proposal. I would like to request that we continue this dialogue and see if we can come to an agreement on increasing increases for our employees. As we can agree, retention of our employees is critical and most importantly, ensuring that we have a strong public safety team. I am requesting that each of you review the original proposal and send to the county manager no later than January twenty-seventh, any other scenarios that you would like for staff to consider. We can either have a workshop after the February first regular scheduled board meeting, or we can make it part of the discussion in our February first meeting. No action will be taken during the meeting, but staff should be prepared to discuss any and all proposals from the board. If we agree to the workshop, I will ask the clerk to advertise the meeting for February first at one P M., the purpose of this for discussion only, employee pay raises and scenarios. So County Manager, I would like to direct staff to make sure that the last presentation is recent to all of the commission, all the entire board, and that we make sure that also that staff reaches out to have conversation with the commissioners as well with any scenarios that they may have.
Yes, ma'am.
Our first presentation will be routed to a smart county initiative, Mr. Jason Dixon from Strategic Alliance Community Development. Can you come forward?
Good evening. Good evening, Chairwoman Harrell and Board. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to come to Henry County to give this presentation in the time that connectivity for our community is so important. My name is Jason Dixon. I'm from Strategic Alliance Community Development. Our headquarters is out of Detroit, Michigan, but we are a national nonprofit. We are the only nonprofit that is partnered with Nokia to go around the country for new technology, to make sure that cities and counties and communities are connected. Our goal is to make sure that communities are connected for education, economic development, and just a good better quality of life. So what I'm going to do is I'll go through and talk about our partners first. We're partnering with Nokia, which is a manufacturer of telecommunications products. Now we're looking at training because this is going to be something that's going around across the country, whether we have lack of training in technology when it comes to telecommunications. That's something that we want to bring to your county. Kellaw National Foundation is on our team to make sure that we have economic development in these communities. Our technology resource team has looked at Henry County to be a mecca actually for the state of Georgia because we looked at, you look, you sit right in the center, which is the wonderful thing. And right now, when you look at what's going on throughout the communities, when it comes to supply chain management, that gives you a great opportunity to set up for infrastructure for ten gigabytes and better for manufacturing. If you look at what happened in Chattanooga, Tennessee, they brought in ten gigabytes of fiber optics and Volkswagen came immediately with a no bid contract within twenty-four months. We would like to replicate the same opportunity. When you look at the digital divide in communities, the education standpoint as we've seen through COVID, also with corporate, corporate America seeing the standards of broadband not being across the country, we're coming to you with a solution, and we really want to start in your county. Your county already has a litany of places that's available for manufacturing, warehousing, so a setup to be the start. With our partnership with Nokia, we're looking at doing an open network. If we do an open network, that's twenty-first century technology. That means AT&T, Comcast, and other telecommunications companies can still run on your network. It's an opportunity to create thousands of jobs throughout your county and your state, and it attracts businesses from across the globe. You're close to the Gulf. That means when the changes come along for manufacturing, you'll be set up. Transportation right now, when it comes to manufacturing and the ability to get goods and services in the country, is at an all-time high. And the country, the Department of Commerce is paying attention to what's going on right now, and we would like certain communities to be able to respond to that. Our relationship right now with the Department of Commerce is at its high. We have relationships and we're talking to them on a regular basis to make sure that the economics for these communities to come for this type of deployment. We're not looking for the county to give us any money for it. We're looking to partner with the county, and we're going to write the grants from the federal government and bring in different partners to bring this opportunity to your community. So when you look at, when you look at the partnerships, when you look at a nonprofit doing economic development and community development, social economic development, it changes the tide for a better quality of life for a community. When you look, when you look at healthcare, telehealth, since telehealth's inception, they have not had an uptick in economics, but now's the time, your large population right now needs to be connected to the internet. They need to have broadband so they can see their physician. Right now, the numbers tell us that fifty-two percent of senior citizens are not able to see their physician and have medication management in our communities. So this is another reason why this is important. When you look at your child education and training, there's no telecommunications training hub in the United States of America, none in the United States of America. So our goal is to strategically place these around the country that makes sense for economic So with the training institute, we're looking at smart city innovation hubs, fundamental fiber, universal broadband training programs, meaning that each community will be connected, each city will be connected with their own broadband service, connected to the county that goes throughout the community, throughout the state. Industry training with certificates from Nokia, which is the manufacturer, so that means your community can go across the country, across the world, with these certificates to be employed. That's phenomenal at this time when it comes to technology and to have that in your backyard. When you look at industry four point O, it's the fourth industrial revolution of technology. When you look at driverless vehicles, the deployment of, the deployment of driverless vehicles, trucks, and aircraft carrying to deliver food, services, and goods to their community. This is all the twenty-first, twenty-second century of technology that we would like to bring. There's already a thirty, a three hundred million dollar investment in the community from the Department of Commerce. Partnering with Nokia and Strategic Alliance, we can help bring those grants to the community so we can make this a reality for the community. So at this time, I just wanted to, if there's any questions, I'm kind of watching my clock on my ten minutes.
Are there additional slides?
Yes, ma'am. So the architectural and technology overview. With the architectural and, with the architectural overview, this is showing, you really can't see, really, I don't know if I can bring it up more, but the foundation of businesses. So where we are right now, most techn, most communities are not at one gigabyte of service for these communities where we're in right now. They're less than one gigabyte. So it's hard to transfer large batches of data from one entity to another. For example, if you look at hospitalization systems are changing right now due to COVID, the batches of information is harder for them to transfer because they don't, they're not connected with broadband. Electrical companies are hard, it's harder for them to transfer information at the same time because now they're going to net metering all across the country. So that's another opportunity for fiber optics to the home to be able to communicate effectively. So now you'll be, you'll be set up with a broadband solution and a typical approach when it comes to a broadband network that has a redundant service, meaning if it breaks down in one spot location, it's really not, it won't be broke down no more than two hours or so. If you look at what happened in Tennessee not long ago with the broadband service due to the, to the storm, the storm, they was off for two and a half weeks. That's something that a community can't afford. Well, this new technology coming through where everything is connected, where it's a redundant service, and that you're able to communicate with your fire, safety, electrical, and hospitalization systems all on one network. Just imagine the community learning how to do this, this trade, to be technicians in technology. Now, we're not talking about low-paying jobs. We're talking about fifty-five thousand dollars a year and better jobs, and it's a litany of them coming. But what's, what's going on right now is we don't have the workforce to do this, and we want to start that training in Henry County. So let's look at what it does for a household. It increases the value of homeownership by seven and a half percent. Because when you're, you see what's going on right now with workforce development, a large amount of people are now working from home on a consistent basis. So now you already have that connectivity to the home. Now, when you're looking, looking at a community like yours that's growing, and now you have more development, now what that does for that, for that builder, that reduces that cost for the builder, and it's transferred cost savings over to the, to the person who's purchasing that home in the community because that infrastructure is already there and they don't have to pay for that. Because oftentimes, the builder has to pay for its infrastructure coming to that community. So that's something that we'll be responsible for, and that attracts more businesses, attracts more development, and it's affordable. So when you look at the Bell Labs and its architecture for smart cities, there are no other. So Nokia actually bought the Bell Labs back in the, I believe that was the late eighties, early nineties when the Bells was broken up. So they are number one when it comes to technology for fiber optic technologies. They've been doing it so long. So to have that in your community, and if you look at what's going on with manufacturing, I'm going to give another example in Tennessee. Tennessee just acquired the Ford Electrification Plant, and that's between Mason and Brownsville. We have the contract already to do those two cities, and Ford Motor Company has partnered with us for that and that opportunity. So at the end of the day, when you look at what's going on with the supply chain in the, in the country, that gives you a hand up for the future. So when you look at all this connectivity that drives success, that drives economic development for your community, it just seems that we need to start as soon as possible to build these relationships so we can have a solution in Henry County. Our phase one actually started in a city in Inster. Inster's six point two square miles, and it has approximately twenty-six thousand people. So this is the architectural design for that community. Every house, every business, every school is connected to the broadband service. That means no one will not be connected, not have the opportunity for education, not have an opportunity to communicate with their business, or just the ability to grow themselves by not being connected. So when you look at this type of opportunity, to make it successful, you only need a thirty-five percent take rate. Thirty-five percent take rate means that amount of other people that's in that community needs to subscribe to it. Either it's the county, the hospital system, or the police department, or the businesses to make sure that this system works and it's not a burden on the taxpayers. So the proposed technology comes from Lightspeed, which is another partner of Nokia, which is assigned to us to do the training and technologies for the home deployment for fibers at the home. So this is the technology that are being everyone, everyone's home in your community. And again, if you really look at the amount of homes, the amount of homes that's coming on, on, on staff for, over the next five to ten years, that's a lot of jobs that you have for this growing community. In our initial target, we're putting another training center in the same, in Inster, which we already have, it's a thirty thousand square foot building that was their old, Inster's old city hall. So we're transforming, transforming a dilapidated building into a Nokia technology hub in that same city. So my goal is to replicate this across the country. So with this, when you look at our next steps, it's, you know, we really want to work with the county to get, get the data that we need to accomplish the goal, find a location in your county for our technology hub, create that workforce development partnership, talk to, you know, the county about what their requirements are for laying fiber. So in Inster, we're following the sewer lines, right? The water and sewer lines, and their requirement is to make sure that as we go through the right of ways, that we're ten feet away from the water and sewer lines. So then they still have opportunity to replace those, you know, in their timeline for that, for those type of projects. Just to be able to get your, your housing commission on team, get a product timeline to put it all together, and establish a meeting cadence, meaning the people that's important, that this means something to in your community, your business leaders, your business developers, your banks, the rest of the mayors in the community, to get them online so we can kind of educate them of what's going on. And then we get the letters of buy-in from them so we can send that to the federal government so it's easier to get those funds to get these goals accomplished in your community. So that's the end of my presentation, ma'am. Thanks for giving me additional time.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Any questions from the board? One of the questions I have, what is, what is, what do you, what would be the expectation from the county?
The expectation from the county is, like I said, is to work with us on the right of ways, the people that's in their communities, or other mayors, their workforce development teams, so we can make sure that it's a county product, project with all the cities involved to make sure it's a greater impact to your state and to our country at the end of the day. It's really a lot of data that we have to get from these communities, and we're going to be responsible for writing the grants and things and bringing those investors from the federal government to this project.
Thank you so much. I'll make sure that this presentation is shared with the board, and if they have any additional questions, they'll reach out.
Okay, now, I'll be in town all day tomorrow, so if there's an opportunity to meet, talk to some one-on-ones, I'll be glad to do it. Thank you for the time. I really appreciate it. You guys have a good evening.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Okay, next presentation is Henry County Year in Review.
Exhausting and yet inspiring. The staff of Henry County Government wants to thank you, the citizens, for your support in allowing us to serve you.
From public safety to planning and zoning, facility maintenance to parks and rec, and every department in between, service to citizens is always our most important priority.
Nearly seventeen hundred employees in more than thirty departments and partner agencies have worked diligently throughout the year to provide excellent service to our citizens, our businesses, and all of our stakeholders.
And all of this while navigating the second year of the COVID-nineteen pandemic.
Although we all faced many challenges this past year, personally and professionally, Henry County employees never stopped working for our residents.
Through new protocols and policies and adhering to the CDC guidelines and the Department of Public Health, Henry County employees have provided exemplary service despite incredibly difficult circumstances.
I can't say enough about the resiliency and efforts of Team Henry and how they continually step up for our citizens, making Henry County a wonderful place to live, work, and play.
And we look forward to continuing that outstanding service in the upcoming year.
Again, I thank the citizens, our Board of Commissioners, and our entire community for their support and commitment through twenty-twenty-one. Here are some of the highlights from this past year. Here are some of the highlights from this past year.
Thank you for the presentation. Any comments from the board? Okay, we're going to move to the consent agenda.
Good evening, Chair and Board members. Um, the items listed on the consent agenda tonight are the annexation AX 2201. The city of Locust Grove has received a request for annexation of properties located on South Ola Road and Singly Drive for the parcels listed in District 1. Department of Transportation, a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners approving payment to ER SNL in the amount of $59,692 for HA5 resurfacing of Kenwood Springs Drive in District 2. Facilities Maintenance, a resolution approving roof replacement at Heritage Senior Center in District 3 and Hidden Valley Senior Center in District 5, utilizing the Omnia Partners contract with Garland DBS, Inc. in the amount of $349,970 using Capital Improvement Plan Fund as approved by the Board and the CIP. Fire Department, resolution accepting a donation in the amount of $500 from Tanger Outlet Center and approving a budget amendment. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving a contract for services with Access2Care LLC for the nurse navigation solution and Lyft Ride Share Program with an estimated annual cost of $201,300 with a one-time implementation cost of $25,000 with a yearly increase not exceeding 3%. For the Police Department, the first item is resolution accepting a grant in the amount of $25,200 for the Naxlon, Nalexon, which is the NARCAN program, from the Criminal Justice Coordinated Council for the Henry County Police Department. Resolution awarding bid number 2230 to Ed's Public Safety for the purchase of weapons and site systems for the Henry County Police Department using the Red Speed Funds Account 2213,070-531600 in the amount of $249,274 and declaring 328 used pistols with two magazines per pistol as surplus for trade and purposes. The last item under the Police Department, resolution to approve a request to apply and accept the Governor's Officer of Highway Safety Grant in the amount of $157,901 for the HEAT program. Under Technology Services, resolution to approve licensing and implementation of Tyler Technologies' Public Safety Mobile Site License, Crew Force, and Shield Force System for the Henry County at an initial cost of $231,330 with an additional yearly maintenance of $48,579 added to the yearly Tyler Public Safety Maintenance Contract. And the last item is, under Transit Department, a resolution adopting the Henry County Transit Master Plan. Oh, I'm sorry, and there was another item added during the call to order for elections and registration, and is the resolution approving qualifying fees for elected county offices for 2022.
Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion from Commissioner Cannon. Your second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We're moving to the regular agenda. Planning and zoning. Comprehensive. Comp-am 19-09, LS Holding Group, Stockbridge, request amendment to the comprehensive plan for property located to the south of Old Highway 3 and Steel Road.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This item before you is a rather large 300-acre piece of property that's between the railroad tracks that goes alongside Old Highway 3, also North Steel Drive, which is an unimproved road, Highway 81 to the south, and then Love Joy Road to the, uh, the west of our subject property. Uh, this subject property is illustrated in the green hatched area on the overhead and also in your exhibit books. You can see that this zoning map illustrates at least, uh, two or three different zoning districts. Our next hearing will be regarding a rezoning of this subject property. But the applicant has been required to request a change to the comprehensive plan, future land use map, to support their rezoning request. This is our future land use map. The peach color is a medium density. The, the gold is a, a low density. And then you can see a bit of gray on the subject property, the top right corner, which is where the, the large shed is that, that services the, the sod farm aspect of this subject property. So we have three different land use designations, the industrial, medium density, and low density. And to support their request for rezoning, they're requesting that all of it be re-designated for medium density that supports densities up to six dwelling units per acre. Uh, this is, uh, the, um, site plan. And I believe this was the site plan that was included when it went through DRI back in 2019. Staff has evaluated the applicant's request. We've considered the existing future land use map designations. And we've considered the applicant's request, which is the subject of our next hearing and so forth. And we do recommend approval of this applicant's request. In November, the Zoning Advisory Board held a hearing and also recommended approval of the applicant's request to change that designation from all of these designations to medium density. And I'd be pleased to answer questions.
Um, does the board have any questions? Commissioner Clemens, this is your district.
I wanted to wait till after the, um, public hearing.
Okay, all right. So this is a public hearing. Uh, anyone that's wishing to speak in favor of the request, including the applicant, will have a collective total of 10 minutes to address the board. Anyone that's wishing to speak in opposition will have the same.
Good evening, Commissioners. Michelle Battle. Um, good evening, Michelle Battle with Battle Law, 3562 Haversham at Northlake, Tucker, Georgia, 30084. We have been working on this project for quite some time with regards to the flume request and the rezoning. Uh, when we look at, um, the overall project, and I think it's important to kind of see how this project is laid out. Um, you can see at the top end, uh, on the right, uh, corner, um, that we have the farm-to-table aspect of the project, um, where it is anticipated that the city of Love Joy will continue, um, its farm-to-table, um, farm that it has on the west side of the site. Um, they have an interest in continuing to offer, um, free vegetables to, uh, those not only within their community, but also to the people that will live within this particular subdivision that we are proposing. Um, additionally, when we look at the land use map that was just shown by staff, where, uh, you have medium-density residential that pretty much cuts through, um, the center of the site. And, um, let's see if I can show here. Um, roughly at about this line, um, it kind of dips around, uh, the, the pond that's there. Um, all of this area up here is currently in medium-density residential. As you can see, um, we've got single-family detached units. When we first started this project, we actually had the townhomes split between this section and this section over here. Um, but, um, from a, um, planning perspective, we thought it was better to put all of the townhomes down in this area, um, which had the low-density residential designation, and to spread, um, the single-family detached product, um, along this corridor of the site. Um, when we look at the medium-density residential that's already here, again, it's up to six units per acre would have been allowed, um, under the land use in this area here. And then the area below this line was where the low-density residential was allowed. It should be noted and remembered that the medium-density residential does allow six units per acre, and the low density is at two units per acre. Our total site density on this site is 3.8 units per acre. So we are well below, um, the six acres per unit that is allowed within, um, the medium-density residential. So we are not trying to exceed that. When we look at our net density, yes, it raises up to 5.4 when we take out, um, the, um, ponds. But the land use, um, plan is based on the gross density, not on the net density. So, um, we are well below what is allowed from a gross-density perspective on this project. We believe that, um, this allows for the overall development. This is a planned unit development where, um, we are looking to plan out the entire, um, project at one time. There's interconnection, um, through walking trails as well as, um, amenity areas, um, that lie within this project, connecting sidewalks. Um, all of these, um, amenities will be available to all of the people that live within this community as well as the farm-to-table aspect that will allow them to benefit from the free, um, vegetables, uh, and, and produce, um, that's produced by, um, the farm-to-table, um, component of this project, which we think is a really exciting component to the project. We have gone through the DRI process. Um, we know that there are a number of improvements that we'll be making, including, um, full improvements and paving along, um, Steel Road. Um, we've got a 20-foot buffer, um, around the perimeter, a lower perimeter of the site in order to protect the homeowners along, um, this corridor. I think the Christmas Tree Farm is roughly in this location here. And there's some homes over here where, uh, we will be providing the 20-foot buffer as well as additional plantings along on this side to ensure their privacy, um, as they abut against other single-family detached dwellings. So with that, we would respectfully request approval of the flume component of this project. Um, if there are any questions or issues that we have here, we'd be happy, uh, to try and address those. And if necessary, um, take the time to, to assure that, um, there is no issues here, um, with regards to the flume. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Battle. Is there anyone else wishing to come to speak in favor? Okay, is there anyone wishing to come and speak in opposition? Okay, hearing none. Um, I will turn it over to the District Commissioner.
Michelle, um, I had a couple of questions in reference to, um, staff has some conditions. And have you read all of the conditions that staff?
Yes, ma'am.
So Stacy, can you come back? And, uh, there's a few conditions that need changes. And I want to make sure, we've talked to our county attorney, that you guys are okay with the changes prior to us moving forward. And I just want the, the board to know and the audience to know, this was the project that the applicant was trying to pull into the city of Love Joy. And, um, staff has worked with, um, all of our different departments to find out what type of impact. So Stacy, you want to talk about that?
Yes, ma'am, if I could. I, I didn't necessarily want to interrupt, but at the same time, this first hearing is only about the future land use map. And those zoning conditions will be part of this, our next hearing. I'd be so pleased to, to talk about the conditions at this time if you would like. But I just kind of wanted to state that for the record that this hearing is, is exclusively about that future land use map.
So Nancy, will you help us to, um, so this has got the OI in it? So did we decide what was legal for us to do? Can we just approve the future land use map, taking out OI and restricting it to the, the other two that are there? Or how do we need to do this?
Uh, I believe you indicated that you were, um, okay with making it all medium-density residential. And that's fine, or you can make it, uh, the low-density or the low-density and medium-density requests and what have you will require the parcel breakup. So if you wanted to go forward with just a medium-density residential, you can go forward and approve that today. And then talk about the conditions for the zoning for the next.
For the second one.
Second. But right now, I think what's on the floor for the hearing now is just the approval to amend the, uh, future land use map.
So we're just approving it to amend it, and then we'll talk about what we're going to amend it to in the second one?
Yeah, then you can talk about, but right, yes. Once you get through with this hearing.
So I would like to, Chair, I would like to make a recommendation to, um, follow staff's, um, lead on approving this, um, to amend the future land use map.
Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Clemens. Is there a second? Second from Commissioner Holmes. If, if there's no further discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is RZ 19-16.
Yes, ma'am. Um, good evening again, Chair and Commissioners. This is the hearing regarding the rezoning of the subject property. And we had talked a little bit in the last hearing about how the zoning of the property currently includes our two single-family, our A residential agricultural, and a bit of M1 light manufacturing. And the applicant's requesting that all 301 acres be rezoned to RS. Again, the subject property is illustrated on the overhead and also in your exhibit books. Talked a bit about the zoning. The future land use map is now entirely medium-density, which supports up to six dwelling units per acre. The, the site plan that went through with the DRI. Uh, these are some of the renderings that were submitted to staff from the applicant's team. And there's a townhome component as well as a single-family component. Staff has evaluated the applicant's request. We've paid particular attention to the fact that the farm-to-table is not only an amenity, but it's intended to be open to the public. And so for that reason, staff is making the recommendation that that farm-to-table area, which happens to be about 26 acres, not be included in what's to be rezoned to RS, residential suburban. Instead, we're saying to, we're recommending to rezone 275.69 plus or minus acres to RS, residential suburban, but to leave that 26 acres for the farm-to-table as, or to make it RA, residential agricultural. In November, the Zoning Advisory Board held a hearing. They did recommend approval, um, with staff's conditions. In the meantime, staff has worked diligently with the applicant's team. And we are recommending updated conditions numbering 40 conditions. And I understand that, um, as part of the Commissioner's motion, there may be subsequent changes. And I'd be pleased to note those down. And if it's the pleasure of the BOC, I can read those conditions, um, after a motion is made. But at this time, I'd be pleased to answer questions.
Okay, um, what we're going to do is that, because this is a public hearing, we're going to allow, um, those that's wishing to speak in favor, including the applicant, to come forward. Again, you have 10 minutes.
Um, again, Michelle Battle with Battle Law, 3562 Haversham at Northlake, Tucker, Georgia, 30084. Um, as we move into the zoning component of this, um, project, um, we are asking for, um, the mass majority of this site to be rezoned to RS, um, with the, um, RA component here for the farm-to-table. Um, we believe that this is an appropriate zoning for the overall site. Again, um, our gross density is at 3.8. Our net density is at 5.4. Um, this is an integrated. This is an integrated community in which you will have access off of the main road here, coming into the site, where we'll have our primary entrance. This entrance will allow access into the interior of the single-family detached portion of the project. We've got sidewalks throughout, and we'll rest into the three, we have three areas here for amenities, which includes walking trails and other gazebos, pavilions, tot lots, dog parks within the various components of the amenity areas. Additionally, as you're moving in, you can see here that we do have some streams and buffers that we are providing, all of the required buffers alongside. And these are, we believe, really nice areas that will be for walking through the trail system that will allow for connectivity throughout the community, along with the sidewalks. There would be improvements along the exterior with regards to the streets in conjunction and in compliance with the DRI that was presented. The staff has indicated that we do have over 40, we have 40 exactly, conditions that have been proposed. Some of the highlights of those include our requirement to improve Steel Road, which will be widened and paved in accordance with the HCDOT standards. Additionally, the agricultural element for the 26 acres, we will be required to maintain that for the farm-to-table component. With regards to the actual build-out of the community, we do have a total of 610 single-family home dwellings and 525 townhomes. However, it's important to note that we will not be developing those all at the same time. There was some concern raised by the Commission, and we believe appropriately about dumping that many units into the community at one time. And so, one of the conditions that we have is that no more than 175 dwelling units can be constructed within a 365-day period, that if that limitation is not reached, the balance can be carried over. However, after 10 years' time, if we have not had the build-out, the Board will then have the opportunity to reconsider the zoning and the conditions. So, that allows for some protection there to ensure the integrity of the overall project that is being proposed. We do have buffers, again, around the perimeter of the site on the southern portion, in order to protect the existing residential homes that are lying on that side. The single-family residential portion, again, will have amenities, including a playfield with benches, a minimum 2,000-square-foot pavilion with a fire pit and grilling areas. We also have the second amenity area, which will have the dog park, as well as a pool with a minimum of 2,000-square-foot clubhouse. In the townhome component of the project, we will also have a dog park, playbenches, and a pool, or a grilling area with a pavilion that will be located in that area. There will be centralized cover mailboxes in an architectural style that's consistent with the overall residential component of the project. We'll have a grand monumental entrance coming into the site, as we had indicated here, off of Highway 81. And we believe this is going to be a transformative project for this area. We are directly across from the prison, next door, again, to the city of Lovejoy's farm-to-table area, and we are very excited about this project and hope that the county is equally as excited as well. We're here to respond to any questions that you may have. We do have our engineer here to answer any questions that may arise concerning any of the site development-related matters. Thank you.
So, anyone else wishing to come to speak in favor of the project? None. Is there anyone wishing to come to speak in opposition of this project? Okay, hearing none, I will turn it over to the District Commissioner, Commissioner Clemens.
Stacy, if you and the applicant could come back up. Out of fairness to the applicant, this is my first time seeing this drawing here. It's not in the package that I received.
Yeah, it's the color of rendering of what was already in the package. It's just in color.
So, we have some, you know, we've talked with our county attorney and staff in reference to this, and there were some additional things that we wanted to add in the condition. And if you guys are not prepared to support these conditions, you all can decide if you want to table it and continue to work on it, or if you want to go forward with it.
Okay.
I can tell you that we are glad that the project is staying in the county and not going, well, staying in, not moving into the city of Lovejoy, because that was just going to be too much and a disaster for logistics for us. So, starting with number 17, the townhomes shall comply with the following minimum setbacks. All of that was fine, but we want to make sure that we have those townhomes to be at least 2,000 square feet. So, you all can just look at these things, and then, you can decide if you're prepared to do them. So, the townhomes should be 2,000 square feet and shall be three stories, all brick. The brick is only on the front with the townhomes, since it's just the front and sides, so they would need to be all brick and three stories, instead of the conceptual drawings that's been shown for townhomes. And even if, the way the townhomes are set up on the layout, they needed to be in pods and pods gated, instead of one big community of 500 townhomes. So, it would be like maybe three different townhome communities within that. Each one of them would be gated separately. And if you wanted to do, you know, different varieties of the townhomes, you could do that. But, we do need the townhomes to be separated. Number 30, every residential area pod should be governed by an HOA, including townhomes. The townhomes pods need to have HOAs as well. That's not on there. The development of the subject property, number 31, shall be phased to allow no more than, you all had 250, but I hear you saying 175, so we need to change that to 175, Stacy.
Okay.
And the certificate of occupancy must be on the 175 before we go on to the next ones. So, they're built, they're ready to go into them, and then, we can start on the next group. That's 34, 35. Each townhome pod, so that's pod A, B, and C. You all have pod A, B, and C, and so, we want to make sure that each pod, pod A, B, and C is gated separately and independently gated, each with its own monumental entrance. And, that's it. Oh, the other one was the square feet of the homes. I think you all have 1,800 square feet on the homes. The homes should be a minimum of 2,400 square feet. That's 20, Stacy.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. And I've made my notes, and I may need to rely on you to correct me if I get these So, what's being scrolled through at this time is the, the updated conditions that staff is recommending since the zoning advisory board. And they do total 40. And there's so many that we've got several screens, and it's not really helpful, but just for the record, I wanted to scroll through them. And also, Madam.
Go to number 20 on there, Stacy.
So, the numbering may be a bit different, and I think that it's going to be helpful for me to read through them.
Yeah, that's different than what's in the book.
Mm-hmm. Right, that is, that is correct.
Well, that's an issue, because that's what happened with the project in District Five. We had one thing in the books.
And we don't want that again, certainly. So, I'd be pleased to read through with the notes that I've made from the changes that you've indicated.
Yeah, we need, I need a hard copy. I really want a hard copy, so that what's in the minutes, Stephanie, is really what we're supposed to have. This sounds like the same District Five issue, again.
Commissioner, come in. This is a hard copy.
Now, I got to read through all these to change them.
How do you used to read them? I had no issue with that whatsoever.
Commissioner, I think we're okay with all of the conditions, with the exception of the three-story townhome component. I think that we are in concurrence that we can do a portion of them at three-story, as opposed to all of them at three-story.
Okay. So, let's do, we got pods A, B, and C. We'll say at least one of the pods have to be the three-story townhomes.
That would be acceptable.
Okay.
At the 2,000 square feet.
Right, and they're still, even though the two stories, they're still all brick?
That's fine.
So.
Brick, you said all brick for fronts.
So, what I would like to do, Chair and Board, is to get this together properly, sit down with you all, let you see, because we need to go through, this is not going to work when Stacy's just giving me this now to read over, and it's different than what's in the book that I've worked on. And I want to make sure it's right. So, if the Board will allow, Chair Harrell, if we could have time to go over this with the applicant tomorrow, what's tomorrow, Thursday?
Yes.
Thursday and Friday, and bring this back at the first board meeting in February. Tucson, I think Tucson said that we could possibly make that happen and do it, because it needs to be in writing and written correctly, so that there's no surprises for the applicant, and there are no surprises for, once the building starts.
I concur on that, that's fine.
I think the only issue is the amount of time for advertisement.
It would need to be re-advertised if it's for decision only.
It would have to be re-advertized.
Even if it's for decision only?
Okay, we just have to read through them then.
Well, if we table it, maybe we bring them to.
Okay, we have to do it. Okay, so, let me see the difference in the. Townhomes shall comply with the following minimum setback requirement. Can, can we do it now? So, if you go to number 15?
Okay.
And this.
Commissioner Clemens, I think staff has, we have tabled this. To a date specific, so you don't have to re-advertize, so you may not have to go through everything. So, maybe they can provide that information to you, and then, that'll give you time to go through everything. And then, we can table it to that first meeting in February, just to go through, just for you all to take action, because you've already had the public hearing. So, you are correct, we could do it on the first meeting in February.
First meeting in February. Y'all look, applicant okay with that?
What is the first date? I'm just.
I'm going on vacation, so I was just trying to see.
It's Monday, Sunday, nine AM.
Of course, while I'm on vacation.
Chair Harrell?
That is my life.
So, we're going to table it?
Yes.
To a date specific.
So, you would need to move to table, table a decision until February the first of 2020 at the nine o'clock AM calendar.
Okay, so, I would like to make a motion to table the applicant's request to the first meeting, February first, nine AM, only to read the conditions and approve.
Commissioner Cannon, second the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Davidson Homes of Marietta, Georgia, requests a rezoning from RA to RM for property located
Good evening, Chair, Board members, and citizens of Henry County. The rezoning request in front of you is for property located south of Foster Drive to the east of Andalusia Boulevard. The property is currently zoned RA, and the applicant is requesting a rezoning to RM. The subject property is highlighted in green on Foster Drive, and is surrounded by mostly commercial and residential zoning districts, and it has an M1 zoning district just south of it as well. The future land use map is classifying the property as high-density residential. The applicant is requesting to rezone 27.54 plus or minus acres from RA residential agricultural to RM multifamily residential for the purpose of a 222-unit multifamily townhome-style rental community, with a density of 8.31 dwelling units per net acre. The applicant's request complies with the future land use map designation of high-density residential, which supports developments with a density of up to 16 dwelling units per net acre. Here are some renderings that the applicant brought to us for the, for the hearing. This slide shows the input we received from various departments regarding infrastructure and public safety. The details of each department's comments can be found in your exhibit books. We didn't find anything extenuating to, to mention during the meeting at this time. On July 22nd, 2021, the zoning advisory board recommended approval of the rezoning, and staff has recommended changes to the conditions from that July 22nd meeting, as recommended for approval by zoning advisory board. So, we have 16 conditions. They are in the PowerPoint, but they are not in your exhibit book, if some of them have changed as recently as this morning. And I'll be happy to leave this on the Board and take any questions.
I'm going to do the same. This is a public hearing, and anyone that's wishing to come to speak in favor of this project, including the applicant, please come forward. You have 10 minutes.
My name is Steve Moore with Moore Bass Consulting, 1350 Keys Ferry Court, McDonough, Georgia, here tonight, representing evergreen living in this application before you. As Kamal pulls this map up, the property is 27 and a half acres, located on the south side of Foster Drive, and our request is to rezone from RA to RM for a, for a rental, a townhome, luxury townhome rental community. We're designated as high-density residential, which, as you know, supports up to 16 units per acre. Our proposed request is 8.3 units per acre, significantly less based on the architectural style of this community being constructed as a townhome side-by-side community versus an apartment where you get a lot higher density. But, I just want to be sure that I communicated that the intent is to be a townhome rental community, just like an apartment community, except the architectural style will be a townhome. It'll have the same amenities, same security, same management style, everything as a traditional apartment complex. It's just a, it's a variety change of your run-of-the-mill apartment community. The, where's the clicker at? The site is heavily wooded. How do I go back? There we go. And we are proposing buffers along the perimeter of the property, north, southeast, and I believe that has also been communicated in the zoning condition. We have, there's a, one issue that came up as part of the, at the ZAB hearing, which was to preserve right-of-way along the, for the future potential extension of North Bridges Road to Foster Drive. And I don't, if you, there was no official plan that we were able to put our hands on that showed that route. It just said that you needed to accommodate this. So, we went and worked with, with Henry County DOT and staff to try to develop a concept that did bring that road up along the, I guess that's the eastern portion of the property. You know, it's, it's a concept, but it appears to be acceptable based on its geometric design and location, and we have pushed that entire portion of the right-of-way on to the subject property. Now, I say that to say that we provided 30-foot buffers around the perimeter, with the exception of that area right there, which is a 20-foot buffer, and I believe that's also reflective in the zoning conditions. As far as the layout goes, there is two accesses proposed to Foster Drive, the primary entrance The primary entrance, which would be there, would, this is, both of these entrances would be gated, but that would be the largest of the two, with a divided median opening, and I have a photograph that I'll show in a second of that. And this is the second access for emergency purposes, also gated. This is a photo rendering of the proposed monument-style entrance, that also would include eight-foot sidewalks constructed along the frontage of, of Foster Drive. The development also features a central amenities center, and again, if you'll just consider this in the context of an apartment community where you have the large centralized clubhouse with swimming pool, this would have the normal features of a, of an apartment-type community clubhouse, a fitness center, resort-style pool with cabanas, be bathing, sunbathing decks in the pool, resort, the flexible office space, meeting rooms, and then the management leasing offices, maintenance, et cetera, would be housed out of that, out of that facility. This is a picture of the clubhouse, and this is the actual rendering of the, the clubhouse that you see in the site plan. Our architect has put this, put this together, just to communicate the, kind of the, the view and the look of that, and then that's a picture of the resort-style pool. There's also two community parks proposed within the community, or within the development. These would feature walking paths, paved walking paths, they'll also have areas set aside for dog parks, outdoor recreation activities. There's two of those proposed in the project, I'll go back to this previous slide. There's one in the center of this section here. Commissioner Clemens, I know you mentioned pods, a townhome's very similar to that, there's two really distinct pod areas, although it's in one community, but each of those has that same Central Park area in that, in that area. This is a rendering of the actual apartment, or the townhome facades. We also understand there was a modified condition that required a brick on the bottom floor on all four sides. This rendering has been revised from what was presented by Kamal to actually reflect that full brick skirt around the bottom floors of those buildings. So, again, this is just a different product than apartments that caters, we think, to a different market. We think this is going to cater to young professionals, millennials, recent graduates from college, maybe getting their first job. It would be potentially for empty nesters, people that aren't ready, or that are tired of having a house to take care of and a yard to take care of. This is full exterior maintenance, yard maintenance. It's for people who want convenient access to the interstate, who want convenient access to the entertainment and restaurants that's available at Jonesboro Road exit. If the parking ride gets built, it would certainly benefit those residents to be able to just travel over, you know, half a mile away to the parking ride to be able to drive into Atlanta. The, the, like I said, these are full exterior maintenance, the yards are kept up by the associate, or by the owner. These are, there's 24-hour on-call maintenance and management, and these types of units would rent about 10% to 20% higher than a Class A apartment community. These rents would, by the time this is built, we anticipate the three-bedroom units to rent for approximately $2,300 a month, and the two-bedroom units would rent about $2,100 a month. They will consist of two and three-bedroom units, a majority of those would be two-bedroom units. The third bedroom is typically, in these type of communities, are usually set aside for a home office or a gym, just based on the, kind of the target audience that they're catering to. And this design, this whole community has been laid out with a maximum of six units per building. Typically, there may be as many as eight, but we've kind of shrunk that down to enhance the green space between the units, and I understand that's also a zoning condition. Each of these units will have an enclosed garage, and they'll have full technology packages internal for security and for ease of access. They'll have ring doorbells, automated thermostats, interior, luxury interior finishes, granite countertops, laminate flooring, extra-height ceilings, extra-tall ceilings, stainless-steel So I think this next, this next slide is a, kind of a walkthrough of a video that we put together, if I can get it to run. And again, this is based on the actual site plan that we've put together. This is the main gated entrance, as you come in off of Foster, and you immediately come past the, the clubhouse with the pool. This facility would also, in this vicinity, would also house the mail kiosk, which I understand is also a condition that was added, which this would be in this, in this general area here. And again, these are the front elevations of the buildings. We did not update the video to represent the full brick on the bottom, but I understand that that is what we intend to do as part of the proposed conditions. And then that's just leaving the community. So in closing, we have read through all the conditions, even the final two that were added today, all of which we agree to. We would like consideration on the condition about limiting the number of three-bedroom units to 10%. Just again, because of that, the, with COVID and with everybody telecommuting, it's become just a big thing, it's a lot different. Again, we're not catering to families, but we would like the opportunity to be able to at least market it to someone who is working remote and needs that separate space for their home office. We would ask maybe that that be considered up to 20% cap on three-bedroom units. Other than that, we're in full agreement with all the conditions. Thank you for your time. I know it's a public hearing, but I'll be happy to answer questions when the time is right. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing, well, you have 36 seconds to speak in favor. If not, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please come forward. Come forward and give us your name and address.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Mr. Nelson Berdysia, I'm resident in Henry County, specifically in the terrace that Eagle Slanting, it's a community adjacent to Jodico Road, which in terms is adjacent to Foster Drive. I believe that the, that the site in question is 27 acres, and they're requesting up to 222 units. In comparison, our subdivision got 175 houses. So this is a big complex in a very small space. If you notice, the crockets that they were presented, it has a lot of green space and areas for people to enjoy, but at 222 units, there will be not such a site on 27 acres, I'll guarantee you that. My home have point 79 acres, if I put eight or nine units in my acreage, let's say six, I will barely have anything greenery on my lot. But not only that, the ways of communications in that area, which is Jonesboro, Jodico, Oak Grove, and including Foster Drive, are basically very secondary roads, meaning for a lot of people using for when 75 is clogged, it's already taxed as it is right now. If you, if you take in consideration that you have the movie theaters there, that you have a school there, and that you have the connections where Foster Drive meets Jonesboro, there's a gas station there, that light doesn't have the timing necessary to manage an increased traffic of 200 homes. It doesn't. I don't, I have been traveling through those roads for the past 16, 18 years, and there's no way that you can put so many people in such a small space and not create a traffic nightmare. But not only that, what about the hospitals, to provide care for those 20-some family, 200-some families that will be there? And schools? The police and fire? And, you know, those are really a concern, because I think that 100% of the residents of Henry County, we have been living here, because it's a healthy community, and we don't want to create a pocket where the, I am not against progress, I am really concerned that the progress will get out of hand, and the people over there doesn't, will not have the same opportunities of other areas, just because they have a, a transportation or traffic nightmare on their hands, or for poor planning. Perhaps this concept is good if the units are less. I mean, 27 acres may be, 100 units will be fine, or maybe 80, but this is my humble opinion. Again, I've been traveling through those roads all these years, and right now, on peak hours or weekends, that 75 is clogged, you could barely go through there. And if you do, when you either meet Jonesboro or Jodico, you'll be stuck in traffic waiting for your turn, maybe 20 minutes, maybe half an hour, maybe more. Without those respect, this is just my comments, humbly submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to come and speak in opposition of this development? Okay, hearing none, I will now turn it over to the District Commissioner to...
Kamal, has there been a traffic impact study done?
It hasn't been one yet, but it's a requirement.
It is a requirement?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Page five of your exhibit, like when you actually get into the report, there is a streets and sidewalks, infrastructure, comments from DOT and transportation planning, and it addresses most of those concerns.
Okay.
Which, which one is that?
Page five, so if you, you gotta go a little deep into, and I can put it up on the...
Can you do that, please?
Yes, ma'am, I can put it on the overhead.
Okay.
Okay, so right here. Starts where it says streets and sidewalks. This is basically DOT and transportation planning comments.
And there, there seems to be a lot of improvements coming for that area, and the traffic impact study would likely make recommendation for even more improvements, or a requirement for more improvements after it's done. We also have a condition involving Foster Road, I believe, and that is condition number four. The owner and developer shall preserve 60 feet of right-of-way along the eastern property line, as determined applicable by HCDOT, as it relates to the extension of North, North Bridges Road. So like Mr. Moore was saying, that's not like a set-in-stone plan, but just in case they do want to extend North Bridges, that, that opportunity is there.
Kamal, do you have those last two conditions on the list, or do they have to be read in?
Yes, sir. So if you would like, can I get the computer back, Ms. Stephanie? If you would like, we, we can read them in, or you can just say, basically, that you, you'd like to approve, if you do choose to approve, with the recommendations in the presentation, because they are in the presentation on this slide, 15 and 16.
Okay. I don't have an issue with the request of the developer in the number of three-bedroom I'm okay for that to be a 20% instead of 10.
Yes, sir.
Other than that change, I would make a motion to approve with all of these conditions.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that, as Commissioner Clemens said before, that we don't have any hiccups with these, and I know a lot of times we have a lot of conditions. I guess I'm asking, Council, do we need to read each of the conditions in, to the record, or can we say that what is presented in the presentation?
I think we can do what's presented in the, presentation is fine, the Commissioner Cannon only had one change. We just need to ensure that when the resolution is actually signed, that the resolution is actually accurate. So he does not need to read it into the presentation, we just need to go over the conditions to ensure they're accurate prior to the signing of the resolution.
Any questions or comments from the Board? Commissioner Thomas?
One question, Commissioner, I do remember that you have another development on Foster Drive, that's about 300 units. How close are these two developments?
I think they're side-by-side, actually.
So I can pull them up on the map. I believe the development you're speaking of, maybe this one? The gray one?
No, it's the gray, I believe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wilson, I'm sorry. So my concern is what, what's being done about the overflow parking? And this, it's a gated community, so you, if you're parking on the street, how are we going to keep cars from parking on the street? I see a couple of overflow parking spaces, but they spread out.
Yes, sir.
So my concern, so you got all these dead-end roads, just make these 90-degree turns, so when you get emergency equipment in, you're trying to make these turns, fire trucks and ambulances, if you got cars on the street, it's not going to happen.
Yes, sir. And so...
How do they prevent that?
The, or the owner of this community, they'll have rules that the tenants have to comply with, and they'll be, whether it's evictions or whatever, if they don't, but each unit will have oversized driveways wide enough to accommodate two cars. So there's, in which the, the multifamily, the RM ordinance requires two spaces per unit, so we've met that off the cuff. In addition, we've provided, I think it's 54 overflow parking spaces that would accommodate any guest parking and that type of stuff, and we intentionally tried to spread that out to distribute those guest parking just amongst the community. And then for the dead-end roads, the International Fire Code, I think, requires no long, no greater than 150 feet long driveway that deadends without a, a proper turnaround. And so we've intentionally limited those roads to that, those drives to that length, and if there's any that are longer, they'll have to have a turnaround that would handle a fire truck apparatus to be able to make a three-point turn, or a cul-de-sac, or whatever it takes to turn that vehicle around.
Oh, I get all that, and somebody, when a road deadends and has the 90-degree turn left and right, if there's any cars on the road, they're not going to be able to make that turn.
Sure, and like I said, the owners of this facility will ensure, just like if it was an apartment community and somebody parked up on the sidewalk, they're going to call a tow truck and haul these people out, because they don't own this, they're renters, and they have to comply with a very strict set of rules, and like I said, there's onsite security and management that will enforce those types of issues.
And you said onsite security 24 hours?
I don't know if it's 24 hours, but it's, they have, I know that a lot of these communities have a, a mobile app where they, they have services that are provided, and when somebody sees something, they can go onto the app, that's the management companies of the facility, and they can register a complaint, and then they'll dispatch, whether it's security, or whether it's a tow truck, or those types of things.
Okay, that's my biggest concern.
So if I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, it's a two-car garage, and then two cars in the drive?
That's, that's what the way it's drawn, yes, sir, but at a minimum, everyone would have an oversized driveway that would be wide enough to accommodate two cars in the driveway. So if the garage was empty, they could have cars in the garage, as well as cars in the driveway, to further increase the number of spaces. But again, an apartment community only requires two spaces per... But again, an apartment community only requires two spaces per residential unit, which we've already met.
Yeah, I get that. And some of the, the driveway, what, 24 feet?
They're probably laid out at, at least 20 feet to the sidewalk. That's, I think, so they're probably about 24 feet. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
The driveway that he was just talking about, you're saying is 20 or 24 feet?
I think they're...
And the reason being, because we have too many communities where the bumpers of the cars are hanging out in the street. So, they pull up to the doors as far as they can come, then the bumper's hanging out in the street.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
I'm just concerned about this concentration and what we're doing over there.
Yes, ma'am. And I, I believe in Kamal's, it's, it's dimensioned on the site plane if we can read it, but I think I laid them out at 24 feet. That probably sounds right, in, for that exact reason, to keep cars from blocking sidewalks. Can you tell what that says? Oh, man, don't ask me to look at it.
All right, so, it looks like the driveways themselves are 16 feet, which can accommodate two cars. And then there's eight more feet in between the landscape strip. 30 feet from the sidewalk to the front of the house.
Probably from the edge of pavement to the front of the building. And that would give you a 20-foot, a 20-foot-deep driveway with a two-foot grass strip, and then a four-foot sidewalk, or something along those lines. But yes, ma'am, we did accommodate that, we did. I know that that's an issue. I hear it in front of this board all the time, that you don't want cars to be able to block a pedestrian path. We've intentionally tried to accommodate that in this design. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any additional questions? Commissioner Cannon, make your motion?
Yes, a motion to approve.
Okay. Got a motion to approve? Can I get a second?
May I interrupt for just a second? Commissioner Cannon, when you make your motion, can you please, motion to approve with the report, I mean, with the presentation, with condition 16 being 20% instead of 10?
Yes. So, I make a motion that condition 16 be amended to 20% three-bedroom.
Can I get a second? Second. If, if there's no further discussion, I'll be favored. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Stephanie, we have anyone sign up for public comment?
Yes, ma'am, we have one person, Robert Kolpek.
Okay.
And I don't believe he's here.
Uh, Mr. Kolpek?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Board. Why so many out-of-county developers re-zoning requests? Because between 2017 and 2020, unincorporated Henry County saw an average of 933 new housing permits. In 2021, this number jumped to an estimated 1,650 permits. Meanwhile, the county impact fee ordinance adopted in 2003, that was 19 years ago. Particular note, no transportation impact fees in the current ordinance. Presently, we collect $1,661 per unit. According to recently completed impact fee mythology report, this could be as high as $10,442, which would be $44.97 for parks and green space, $34.46 for transportation. Therefore, we wouldn't have to rely on just spots. You also have $21.28 going to public safety and $369 for libraries. The, the county can set these amounts listed above. Doesn't have to be the maximum, but impact fees are also charged to commercial and industrial construction. These fees are calculated on a per-square-foot basis. The Board of Commissioners has been holding these workshops since October and November, but nothing has happened since then. So, Henry County desperately needs an update to the impact fee ordinance, especially out of transportation impact fee. The Board of Commissioners has had the authority and the tools necessary to adopt today, which means after I get done speaking, you can add this to the agenda and get this done tonight. What makes me question things, I hear some of you say our county's in high demand, yet we charge the least amount of impact fees. Why are we afraid to raise these fees that were set in place 19 years ago? We need to get compensated for the impact. We're leaving big, big money on the table. Here's a couple of examples. Do the Braves give a discount on World Series tickets? No, because they're in high demand. When do the Braves give a discount? When they're rebuilding and there's very little interest or attendance? So, changing an area, a rural area, from single-family homes on acre lots to townhouses and apartments is extreme. The maximum we should move is to half-acre lots. The quarter-acre lots and less do not sustain. Doesn't give kids any place to play in their own yards. And there's no real amenities coming forward with these out-of-county developers. So, basically, what kind of quality of life are we giving these new families? Not the Henry County rural I chose to move to. Apartments and townhouses do not make sense in a rural area. Quit trying to please out-of-county developers. They come, make their money, and go back to their area. Everybody speaking in favor of rezonings usually is making dollars on the transaction. The community area, the people should have a say. If the area's in such high demand, why would someone own a vacant, commercial, dilapidated property and pay taxes on a vacant building and take a loss? Most people would have somebody in that building. I see a lot of dilapidated properties up and down 42 and 138. Can we do something to get these unsightly properties adjusted? Make the owners responsible to improve. Commissioner budgets, I saw $2,500 for most people. I saw $25 for one and $6,000 on another. Huge gap in spending. And my last thing, let's get together and get these county employees to raise. With over 200 openings, you need to know you have an issue. And folks in housing need to be compensated retained. You never want to lose great folks over pay, especially when the finance manager says you can cover the costs. Consider the cost when you pay an outside vendor to provide the services. You're still paying for it, or you're paying more for those same services. Thank you for your time tonight.
Is that the only person we had signed up for public comment?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Any Commissioners having announcements for events that they're having, any upcoming events? Okay. Our next meeting scheduled event says February 1st. We have a regular BLC meeting at 9:00 AM. And then February 15th, regular scheduled meeting at 6:30 PM. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.